TJ, do you have your flower, your pizza shirt on?
Pizza shirt? It's underneath.
Underneath. He goes to me, "I will come in my pizza shirt."
Good evening, everybody. I have a motion to reconvene into open session. Motion by Ms. Mammalito, seconded by Mrs. Weiss. All in favor? Five zero. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, and I ask that you stand at the end for a moment of silence. Elwood has lost a fallen officer and fellow dad in the community. The Board of Education immediately following his passing, we had a meeting on the Thursday following. We did hold a moment of silence at that time for Officer Tesasco. And we also had this evening a fellow colleague of ours that passed away, Ms. Sandra Ackley. She was a 36-year member of our school lunch facility. Sorry, give me a second. Dr. Bossert, right? Food services, excuse me, food services worker at the Elwood Middle School for 36 years, and she's an Elwood resident for over 50. She leaves behind a son, a daughter, and four grandchildren. So please also keep that family in your thoughts and prayers this evening. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Might be a motion to approve the minutes of a previous business, of a person's, I'm sorry tonight, I don't know what's going on. The minute of the previous meeting of April 15, 2021, motion by Mrs. Weiss, seconded by Mrs. Scrola. All in favor? Five zero. May also have a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting of April 27, 2021, motion by Mrs. Weiss, seconded by Dr. Siddiqui. All in favor? Five zero. And that brings us up to our accommodations this evening. Dr. Bossert, if you will.
Thank you, Mr. Tomio. Yes, we are very pleased to be recognizing a number of individuals this evening. We have many local businesses who help to support our schools and our student activities and help us, you know, whenever, whenever the question is asked, there seem to be some that consistently ring the bell and answer. And Mozzarella's Pizza is one of those businesses that may as well have a satellite office within the Elwood School District for the frequency in which they are making deliveries and doing things to support our students and our charitable acts. So tonight, we wanted to recognize the proprietor of that establishment, TJ. So I know that our board has some comments they'd like to make, but I have a certificate.
So TJ, the Elwood Board of Education felt it was appropriate to recognize you tonight for all the contributions that you've made to our district for many, many years. I have been here for 13 years and have seen and heard of many, many countless acts of generosity. Whether it was delivering 30 pies to Boyd during game show night, if my memory serves me, which was a Friday night, for a little or no profit because I did shake you down, or allowing Girl Scouts to sell cookies in the store, and most recently, your support to our senior class, and again, for our fifth grade class. You continuously take care of our administrators, our faculty, and our staff, and our students. And even before I got to know you on a personal level, it was always a pleasure frequenting your establishment, not only because of your delicious food, but your warm hometown feel. You treat your customers like family, you always greet everybody with a smile, and you lend a hand to anybody in need. So thank you for being a good neighbor, and we truly appreciate you.
Yeah.
No, I just want to say, I'm really, I'm a little nervous too. They told me not to talk too much, but I want to say, I would like to get back to company. Like, I love it. It's, you know, it's, it's the best thing I ever had, so put that way.
Oh, oh, oh!
Thank you. Yeah. I think up on the stage would be great.
While they're taking the photo, TJ, yes, on behalf of the Board of Education and the Elwood community, we want to thank you for your dedicated service of pizzas to our community. You can see Ms. Mammalito and Ms. Weiss are up there. Both of their children have been gainfully employed by Mozzarella's pizzas, as well as numerous Elwood students over the years. So not only do you serve delicious food to our community, you help our students earn employment and some money for gas and college and everything that goes along with that. So thank you, and we appreciate everything you do for the community.
Next one may come as a surprise for those that didn't look at the agenda for accommodations ahead of time. I am very proud of the Board of Education in totality of your commitment to refining your own knowledge base and craft and expertise in the area of school governance. And NISBA, the New York State School Boards Association, has began, began a program to recognize board members for the training and the additional services that they provide to their communities. So I'm going to read a statement that was sent to me by NISBA. It says, "Dear Dr. Bossert, the New York State Board, School Boards Association recognition program is designed to acknowledge those school board members who strive to continually expand their governance, knowledge, and skills. NISBA's recognition program is comprised of four achievement levels, which are reached by accumulating points for participation in various NISBA training activities, including state mandated training workshops, Board Officers Academy, legal workshops, convention-related events, or custom, or custom board retreats. For more information on recognition board programs, please see enclosed. Sure. Our records indicate that one or more members of your district's Board of Education have earned one of our board achievement warrants ranging from level one to level four. In close, you will find a copy of each board member's award letter and their respective awards, which we encourage you to present at a public board meeting for the community to appreciate. Thank you for helping recognize the board members who took their time to enhance their leadership skills." I will add to that, the COVID pandemic made this an even more challenging task than the past as all of these programs were given online and in virtual space, which took away that conference opportunity that our full board tends to have the chance to do each fall. We look forward to having that chance again each fall. But tonight, I would like to accommodate both Dr. Siddiqui and Mrs. Weiss for their achievements from New York State School Board.
Oh, wow.
Oh, my gosh. Wow. Did I get a Mozzarella's Pizza certificate? How wonderful. It's awesome.
All right, we'll go back on the stage.
Go back on. I guess because we're like, "Oh, my goodness."
Can you tell if Time Up was on top of the fireplace?
Oh, yeah. Where places are winning.
And to the, to the full board, I really do look forward to being able to reengage this fall with some of the conference activities and other opportunities that NISBA provides. We are all lifelong learners, and we have found tremendous value in the training and supports they provide. And thank you for being such willing participants in all the offerings. This week has had two celebratory events included within the calendar. On Saturday, it was Principals Appreciation Day. Now, I do have to question why teachers get a week and principals get a day. And I do have to question why, if you are going to recognize your principals, why it takes place on a Saturday? But that said, we made sure within the Elwood School District that our principals and our teachers felt appreciated, respected, and admired. And I do have to give a very special thank you to our PTAs who made sure that Teacher Appreciation Week did not go unnoticed. There were several special occasions that took place throughout the district to recognize the efforts of our teachers. I understand those were very well received. And more so, what I found is that the parents who took the time to just write kind notes to our teachers and administrators this week, they are so warmly received. As I responded to one parent, "Chicken soup for the soul." This has been a most challenging year for our educators in totality, everyone who works within the district. And when someone stops to take some time out of a busy schedule to simply say thank you and recognize the efforts and talk about, you know, the specific connections made with a student or the specific accommodations made on behalf of a student, it really does a lot to recharge the batteries and to remind folks why they entered the profession to begin with. Our, our principals and our teachers, our administrators and our teachers faced the challenge this year of reopening and redesigning and reimagining a school district in the face of a global pandemic. There was no rulebook for that. None of it, no part of a teacher training program or administrative training program said, "Here's what you do in the event of a global pandemic." And the way that our district collaboratively navigated the challenges that were faced and we continue to face due to COVID-19 is nothing less than extraordinary. You know, I often say the race for excellence has no finish line, and this year, we had to add, nor does it pose pause during a pandemic. Elwood is one of the very few school districts that can boast the fact that we had five full days of live instruction for our elementary students at the start of school year. We were one of the first districts to bring back full capacity, beginning at the secondary level. We were one of the first districts that had live synchronous instruction available remotely from all of our calendars, from all of our classrooms. It gave me great pride when other superintendents reached out and said, "How were you able to accomplish that with your teachers? It needs to be negotiated. It needs to be a partnership." There was no authority to simply direct teachers to begin doing some of the things that our teachers embraced. So when superintendent colleagues called me and said, "How were you able to achieve that?", I said, "Mutual trust and respect," and that was my honest answer. Working collaboratively, working in partnership, helping to collaboratively plan. We did not always agree every step of the way, but we remained respectful of one another. We kept each other's perspectives, and we kept our minds focused on doing what we felt was in the best interest of our students and the health and safety of all. So I hope that every day is Teachers Appreciation Day. I hope that we celebrate the work of our principals and administrators every day. But I thought it was important to pause this week to make sure we did it and focused our appreciation specifically. So on behalf of the board, Mrs. Marks helped me prepare certificates of appreciation to be distributed to our, our building principals, who we previously recognized at a board meeting earlier this year. And she made one in totality for the Elwood, all of the teachers of Elwood, which I will present to Mr. Chefsnaf, their elected president. They asked if I wanted them to attend tonight's meeting. But out of appreciation for their extraordinary efforts, I said, "You can watch virtually from home." So I hope you were doing that, and please accept my deepest appreciation for all of your efforts this and every year.
Thank you, Dr. Bossert. Thank you both to administrators and the teachers. Dr. Bossert, do we know if Mr. Ruck isn't going to not be here tonight?
I was expecting Mr. Ruck. I did have the opportunity to review his report, and I have it in front of me. I'm not sure where Dan is, which makes me a little concerned. But I'm going to go ahead and read the report he provided for the Board of Education on his behalf, and we'll reach out to Ms. Przynski and see if she knows where our signals may have been crossed.
Perfect. Thank you.
Would you mind if I read his report? If the board would prefer to divert his report until after he arrives, that's great, too.
I prefer to hear from him, not you.
Yeah, me too.
But yes, if the board is okay with that, we'd like to hear from, okay. We'll wait. Thank you, Dr. Bossert. Not that we hear your voice too much, but we'll wait for Dan.
Understood.
All right. We're going to move on in our agenda to the budget hearing. May I have a motion to open the budget hearing this evening? Motion, Mrs. Scrola, seconded by Mrs. Weiss. All in favor? Five zero. Ms. Dunkel.
Thank you, Mr. Tomio. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming to the board meeting once again and listening to my budget hearing presentation. I know many of you have heard the budget presentation many times thus, thus far throughout the year, but tonight should conclude with the budget hearing.
Ms. Dunkel, I think it's okay if you remove your mask, as long as we're a safe distance away from others.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Siddiqui. Our budget update. As everyone knows, we've discussed the total budget that was proposed and approved by the Board of Education is $66,913, excuse me, $913,579 with a tax levy of 2.44%. And it's just important to note that that tax levy is at the cap. So our maximum cap is 2.44%, so we are going out to the cap. Just a brief overview of our revenue budget. Just making sure this is on. So the tax levy that we are discussing- So the tax levy that we are discussing, the 2.44% is an increase of 1.1 million from last year's budget. Our state aid that we've recently been discussing is $1.3 million increase from the previous year. Both the fund balance allocation and ERS reserve have no increase from the previous year's budget. Our pilot money is 44,000 of an increase. Our miscellaneous revenue has a reduction of 137,000. And just to remind everyone, the miscellaneous category has to do with use of facilities that we charge some of our outside vendors, as well as tuition we receive from other school districts for our students who attend Elwood. We have a student who is graduating, so they will no longer be attending Elwood, so we're losing revenue in that particular category. So the total increase from budget to budget is $2.4 million, which equates to a 3.83% This is the expenditure side of the budget. It is categorized by three different components, administrative, capital, and program. And as you can see, the total for the expenses is 66,913,579, as we know, the revenue and expenditure budget have to match one another. We can't have one exceed the other. These next few slides is a line-by-line expenditure of our entire budget. I felt it was important that the community understand some of the areas and where these monies are being spent, so this is a line-by-line budget by our account function, which is the far-left column. But New York State designates those account codes that you see. Every school district has the same account codes designated with the same budget description. So these three slides that you may have in front of you show a line-by-line expenditure for each category, and as you can see on the bottom of this page, again, it totals to the $66.9 million. I did want to point out the contract transportation line item. This year, as we've been discussing with the transportation RFP that we have out, that we are anticipating a multi-year transportation contract, so in order for us to legally do that, it has to be noted to the community that this year's budget includes year one of a multi-year agreement. So by approving the budget this year, you would be approving the multi-year contracts. Additionally, I just wanted to add regarding the transportation, the RFP process was closed today. The RFPs were due back. We did receive one RFP from our existing transportation contract, and we start, we are still evaluating the RFP as it just came in this afternoon, but our, I'll call it, fears were realized that, you know, the price increase that we were, have been discussing, has been realized, so we are looking at a high increase. I can't tell you what the number is at this moment because we're still evaluating, but we are looking at an increase to transportation as we've been discussing. Just to highlight some of the items in the line-by-line expenditure budget, I will pull up special education, that I just realized is spelt incorrectly, special is spelt incorrectly. That's a $7.2 million line item budget. And again, that covers special education expenses that we pay to BOSEs. Can you, let me see if I can make this larger. I don't know if that helps. That doesn't help. Sorry, I was trying to make this helpful and I'm making it worse. Yeah, thank you. So I just wanted to discuss some of the, I guess, the larger items. So as I said, the special education line item, which is $7.2 million of the budget, that includes special education services to BOSEs, it includes our special education staff, materials and supplies, contractual items that are all related to special education. Transportation is in there, has a $4 million expense. Our medical insurance, which is the medical, the health insurance we pay for our employees' benefits, that's roughly $9 million piece of the budget. Additionally, I know technology, technology, computer insisted instruction is 1.5 million, and again, that includes our technology staff as well as our BOSEs expenditures for technology, which a large part of that is made up of our Chromebooks that we have on a lease through BOSEs year after year. It's also important to note in certain categories, I'll use the business administration category or, you know, any, the numbers that you're seeing are not just salary numbers. They're inclusive of, like I was seeing contractual expenses, materials and supplies, business administration, for example, that's include, it does include salaries, so for business administration, that includes salary for both my, for both, not for both, for me and for seven staff members, so I think sometimes there's a misunderstanding when people look at specific line items, that they assume that that is the salary for one particular employee or group of employees, but it is important to keep in mind that it also includes contractual items as well as materials and supplies. Moving on to the estimated tax rate or the impacts on the taxpayers for next year, there is a estimated tax rate increase of 2.47%, and that's based on the estimated assessed values that we recently received from town of Huntington. So I know, and every year we discuss this, there is no average home value within Elwood, but if your home value is assessed at roughly $3,500, this budget would have an impact of roughly $250 a year for your particular taxes. And again, there is no, let me see if I can make this larger without messing it up. If that helps everyone. Again, these are estimates based on the assessed value we received from the town of Huntington. And as everyone knows, their individual home assessment drives this tax portion as well, so I just wanted everyone to understand that. Reviewing once again the unknown factors that will impact the spending plan. Are we opening guidelines for September? We're still waiting from New York State to see what requirements we will have as far as COVID is concerned, what our technology needs and requirements will be, what distance learning requirements may exist. Transportation, as we just discussed, our auditor RFP results have also come in, but we have not yet evaluated them, but that's a small portion, but again, it's just an unknown expense at this point. Special education, that's based on our current student needs, and if we have students who are valued and need additional services, or we have additional families move into the district that requires special education needs, that line item would be increased as well. And last but not least, our staffing fluctuations, and that's based on enrollment and whatever instructional delivery model we will have for September. The proposed enhancements that Dr. Bossert and I have been discussing the last few meetings has been focused on our mental health. We are hoping to reinstate the secondary coordinator as well as social workers, which would allow us, or give us, one full-time social worker at each of our four buildings, which is something that the district has desired for many, many years. One-time purchase considerations include technology. Again, we're, we made a lot of enhancements this year. They're going to be, we have to continue some of those enhancements. As we moved the Chromebook initiative now to K-12, there are costs that are, will be increasing in order to support those Chromebooks, as well as the software programs that are involved with that. Marching banner uniforms, we've spoken about, as well as athletic uniforms and the security vehicle and/or the maintenance truck that we lost in a fire, so these are all proposed enhancements. Again, it's, it depends how the transportation contract, you know, ends up, and we're hoping to be able to make these enhancements during next year's budget cycle. This next slide is regarding our contingent budget. If the budget fails on the first time, the Board of Education has three options. They can put up the same budget again to the voters, they can put up a modified budget, or they can go directly to a contingent budget. If the budget, if a revised budget or the same budget is proposed and it fails a second time, the district automatically would go to a contingent budget. If that happens, we would have to make additional reductions to the expenses of 1.18 million. So that is something we have not had to done, had to have done at Elwood, and we're hoping to continue on that path of not going to contingent budget. If we were to go to contingent budget, these are some of the reductions that would have to take place. By law, under New York State law, there are certain items that have to be eliminated from a budget if you go to contingency. Those items include essential equipment. And moving on from that, we would have to make potential reductions to security, elimination of some of our BOSEs programs, potential reductions to athletics and co-curricular activities, our AP courses and high school electives, the enhancements we spoke about in the previous slides would not be able to take place, and we may have to make staffing reductions as well. And again, that's if we were to go to contingency, that's somewhat of a worst-case scenario. And that concludes my budget hearing. Just a reminder, everyone, to everyone, the budget here, the budget vote is May 18th. The door is open at 6:00 a.m., closes at 9:00 p.m. at the Elwood Middle School Cafeteria. Does the board have any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Dunkel. Any questions, Ms. Weiss?
Do you have questions? Okay. I do. Thank you, Lorraine. I have a couple of questions. The first one is, I'll go backwards, with a contingent budget, so often we hear, oh, athletics and music is going, but this is what we're required under the law to do?
Not each of those, not each of those items. Under the, under the law, equipment is usually the first thing that, it's mandatory that is eliminated, any additions to equipment. So depending on the reductions we have, we have, I think it was 1.18 million. Of the three components that we have in the budget, the administrative, the capital, and the program component.
Right.
The reductions really have to take place in the administrative and program piece and not the capital, because capital includes our debt and a lot of the buildings and grounds, the things that we need to, excuse me, need to run the school district. So the capital program cannot be touched, so when we have to make reductions, it has to come out of both the administrative and the capital, excuse me, the program component, which is where all teacher salaries lie, you know, most all salaries lie in the administrative and program components. So we would have to make reductions, like we were talking about, to staff and, you know, things that directly affect the students, unfortunately.
And that itself is in, hopefully we don't come to that term, but that's in the privia of the board and the, to make those priorities and determinations, correct?
Correct. Right, there are, there are some line items that are mandated under state law, but then the, if, let's say that equated to $500,000 and we had to still cut another 600, that would be somewhat at the discretion of the board to pick and choose within those two components.
If I may, Ms. Weiss, just to jump on your question, I think to piggyback there, is the contingent budget is if we go right to a contingency. We have a layer in between to put a budget back before the community, and what I think you're trying to say, which I agree, I was a student here when we had those 5% plus budgets, and the first thing was doom and gloom, students cut.
Right.
Athletics cut. I don't think that would be the will of the board. I don't think we would jump, I can't speak for us, to a contingency. We would look at things that do not affect our students first, and then move forward and present the budget that meets with voter approval, would hopes to meet voter approval, but I don't think we would want to go straight to a contingency budget, you know.
I just wanted to get a clear understanding of whether, because like you said, we often hear, oh, let's cut athletics and let's cut music and whatever, but I just wanted to get a clear understanding of whether that is state-directed or is that within what we decide as what our priorities are. That, I guess that's where I wanted to.
Lorraine, isn't it a contingent budget when it fails twice?
That's correct.
Yeah, so we're not, we're not doing a contingent budget on our second run. It would be if we decided to put the same budget out and it failed again, or we created a second budget and we decided to make some cuts and it failed again. Then we are forced to legally go to a contingent budget, correct?
That's correct.
But we also have the option to go straight to a contingent budget, correct?
That is correct as well. Yeah, you have three options if the budget fails on the first vote.
Okay, and I hope we don't go to that, so I just.
Neither do I.
I just want.
If I may comment, please, on Mrs. Weiss's remarks. When the PTA met earlier this week to, or review the budget proposal, I made a comment that I'd like the board to hear as well. I don't like that slide because it appears to be a threat to the community. There are some districts that use that type of language, Mrs. Weiss, as incentive for the community to support the budget. I don't, I don't subscribe to that theory. That's why you don't hear those types of things under our leadership, this administration. Lorraine is correct that if the budget were to fail twice and we have the legal obligation of adopting a contingency budget, there are areas in which the state requires expenses to be reduced, things like equipment purchases and certain contractual obligations. Then there is flexibility for the administration to make recommendations to the board of how to make up the additional shortcoming. Some communities, in order to encourage the board, the community to support the budget, will say, if the budget fails, no athletics, no curricular activities, not, I don't subscribe to doing that because I would never make those recommendations to the Board of Education, and I believe that's what Mr. Tomio was saying. So rather than being draconian in nature, it's, we put up a slide to basically say, we would have to discuss everything.
Right.
Should the budget fail, and leave it at the recommendation of the administration, but under the purview of the board to decide what reductions we feel would be least detrimental to our students should we have a failed budget. All of that said, we're very hopeful to have the support of the community so that we don't have to have those conversations.
Agree. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so my next question, just unrolled. The estimated taxpayer impact statement, the tax rate increase that's 2.47%. Can you just clarify that again, the difference between that and the 2.44% levy?
Yes.
What is, what is I, what am I as a taxpayer going to see? The 2.44 or the 2.47? I'm confused.
On your, your actual tax bill.
Yes.
It's the 2.47. So the 2.44 is the total levy increase to the community. So that, when that money, the pot of, I believe it's 49 million, off the top of my head, 40, yeah, 49.6 million, that's divided up amongst the entire community. So based on your assessed value, that's where your particular tax increase is going to play in, and the average tax increase that we're estimating based on the assessed values we received from the town of Huntington is 2.47%.
So why is, what is that, why do we have that at 0.03%? I'm not getting it.
It has to do with the assessed values of the community. So the tax levy is just simply the amount of revenue that the district is asking for from the taxpayers.
Okay.
The town of Huntington takes that 49.6 million and develops a tax rate based on the assessed values within the community, so we don't set the tax rate, the town of Huntington does.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
And I think this is my final question, I was working backwards, I'm sorry. Second to ask. On the line-by-line expenditure, when you talked about the special ed line 2250.
Yes.
The 7.2 million, is that number before or after the BOSEs? Does that include the BOSEs or projected BOSEs aid that we're going to get?
That, no, so the aid is not part of this, this is just the expense side.
Okay.
The aid for the BOSEs programs is included on the revenue side in our state aid category. So this is just the actual expenses for special education.
Okay, well, that's, so we're getting money on the 7.2 million that we spend, we're going to get some of that back?
Yes, we're going to get some of that back. Not, not, not the entirety of that 7.2 million is aidable, but all of the BOSEs categories or expenses within the special ed line are aidable, and we do get a portion back from New York State.
Board members, if I could just ask a service, I read body language from Ms. Clem, so the folks can hear us watching the live stream, for a question or a comment, if you could just lean into your microphones a little bit, the folks who are observing from home will have a better opportunity to hear the questions as well as the answers.
Okay. Am I not coming in loud and clear? I usually have a big mouth.
Thank you, board.
So in line with the same thing, the line-by-line expenditure, when we did the line-by-line.
Just lean in a little bit, Mrs. Weiss, I'm reading body language.
It is a little low, Debbie.
It's low? Who, maybe, I can scream, everybody knows that. Okay. Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. So on the line-by-line expenditure budget summary, we see the proposed budget, and having done budgets in the corporate, and I understand it's totally different from here. here, but was there a standard percentage, I think I'd asked this once before, that goes across every line item, like, you know, we're increasing, do we increase it by 5%? Is it something that's done individually, line-by-line, depending, like some would decrease? I don't see the actual for this year, so it's kind of hard to, to look, to kind of gauge whether we increased every line, or we just increased certain areas.
Where, so all of the, each of these lines that have to do, like all, all of, on this particular slide, like we have art, business, English, those are mostly the teacher salaries. So any of those, any line that includes a salary, we build in whatever the contractual increase is in that particular bargaining unit. As far as items that are not related to employees, we have contractual agreements with some of our outside vendors for, let's say, athletic training services or our, our legal firms. So we budget based on usually a three-to-five-year actual, looking back at the three-to-five-year actual expenses, and during the budget process, I typically reach out to those particular firms or vendors and try to negotiate the best or the lowest increase that we can. So every, every line item is, it, it does vary. When it comes to the New York State, teachers are time and system, the employees are time and system, our health insurance, all of those items, the increases are given to us directly from New York State, so we have no control over that. So it's, each, each line item is different, but when we have control over it, we try to keep that below the 2% to make it in line with the tax cap.
So it's a lot more intricate than just applying 5% across the board or whatever it is?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you, I appreciate that clarity.
No problem.
Any other questions?
I'm done.
I think Sarah has some.
Dr. Siddiqui?
Hi, Ms. Dunkel, that was a great presentation, thank you.
Thank you.
I just had a question about the slide, when you said unknown factors with potential impact on the spending plan. So what is the, like, where, where does the money in case we need to, in case we need to go over, what, what happens in this scenario? Like, is there a reserve, is that where the reserve is, is used, or what are you doing?
No, not at this, not at this time. So if, I'll, like, for example, we were talking about enhancements this year.
Right.
Because we received roughly $600,000 more in state aid than we were anticipating, so we're talking about putting those enhancements in. But if some of these expenses, like the transportation or special education goes up, that'll reduce our ability to make those enhancements.
Okay, okay, so it'll come from the enhancements and then we have to take away?
Yes, we don't, we, we don't have, there's very little flexibility within the budget, some, like, we do have small contingencies for special education and things like that, but when it comes to this type of budget where we're possibly proposing enhancements, that money could easily be reduced.
Okay.
Because of our circumstances this year related to transportation.
If I may, Ms. Dunkel, I just want to further answer Dr. Siddiqui's question by repeating a statement I made at the PTA meeting earlier this week. The increases to transportation are going to take a large portion of the additional aid that we had received, we do know that. There are some things that we included as enhancements in the proposed budget that we would really like to see added to our program and our services for students. So we may have to look at the federal stimulus aid as a way to supplement expenses that we cannot include in our general operating budget. And I've been very purposeful, and Ms. Dunkel's been purposeful, in not trying to confuse those two items. I, I don't want there to be any perception amongst our community members or our board that the federal stimulus aid is part of our operating budget, it is not. Those are program-specific, that will have a termination date three years from now. So it would not be wise spending to include something dependent upon the federal stimulus dollars that is a required necessity within the operating budget. However, for something that the district places a strong emphasis and priority on, such as mental health services for students, and Mrs. Weiss, you asked this question, if we are unable to include the additional social workers in the operating budget because our increases in other areas inhibited our ability to do that, we would have the flexibility to investigate using federal stimulus dollars to support our mental health services for students. We would have that opportunity. It is not an ideal position, because then the clock is ticking on those individuals. If we use federal stimulus aid that we know expire in three years to add positions to our budget, we would have the clock ticking for three years, and it's time to figure out how to then incorporate those positions into our operating budget. But would we have the opportunity to investigate saying, okay, we couldn't afford social workers due to the increase in our transportation budget, which, believe me, feels like venom leaving, leaving my lips, could we use federal stimulus aid to hire those social workers? That's an investigation that we will have to have if that's the position that we are placed in.
And Dr. Bossert, can I, for those of you that weren't at the PTA meeting, I guess part of that was really also diverting that money, that if we can use that, if we can use the money for this, for the mental health with those social workers in that three-year period, and then divert what monies were allocated for, let's say, the additional transportation cost, or if we get additional special aid, that was really more of the question, you know, still, I guess your, your point is that we couldn't, couldn't allocate those positions in the budget and then use federal stimulus money for the first three years to compensate those positions and use that money somewhere else?
The problem with reoccurring costs in a grant, and the federal stimulus money is a grant, is that the grant eventually expires. We know the federal stimulus grant expires in three years. So when you add a reoccurring expense that's grant-dependent, it's putting a deadline on those services. So the intent of the federal stimulus money, as I explained, is for gap-closing initiatives. We're going to have great conversations about offerings for summer school, an extended day, and credit recovery, and lots of things that aren't in our budget and we don't have the flexibility to offer without the federal stimulus. But when you start to appoint personnel using grant monies, it puts an end date on their employment. So we would have, while we could do it, we would have then three years to figure out how to find the flexibility to include them into the operating budget rather than having them be grant-dependent positions. So could we do it? We sure could. It's not ideal.
Okay, so the personnel that you were talking about at the PTA, the council meeting, would be for those additional services only, like summer school and whatever, and that would be mostly our existing personnel, correct?
Correct, additional remuneration for our existing personnel, not hiring new teachers or other new employees based upon those programs. So when Dr. Hall and her team, and we're going to present it at the June meeting, so I, I look forward to discussing it in greater detail with you, when she talks about summer school, when she talks about extended day, when she talks about additional AIA services, that's going to be appointing our teachers to do work above and beyond their regular day at a stipended rate, using grant monies to, to pay them.
Okay, just, and I know you don't have all the parameters for the, any of the parameters for the federal stimulus yet, but is there, is it plausible that we may, down the road, be sharing some of those services with other districts, such as maybe offering a more expansive counseling, mental health over the summer, that maybe we can share with our neighboring districts that would enable more kids to access services than we would normally be allowed to do with our staff, existing staff?
I think it is very likely that a portion of our federal stimulus is used in collaboration with Western Suffolk BOCES. I think there'll be a lot of networking and collaboration between districts through BOCES for contractual services using the stimulus, because we're all looking to do the same thing.
That would be awesome.
So it makes sense to consolidate our services, and I think that our proposals will include partnerships with Western Suffolk BOCES and our neighbors.
Excellent, thank you.
Absolutely.
Dr. Siddiqui, was, any other questions?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, I have a couple of questions and a couple of comments. If we can go back to the 2021-2022 proposed enhancement slide. Oh, thank you. So obviously, transportation is going to be an increase that we didn't expect or anticipate, and we're not sure what that's going to be. The enhancements are contingent upon what that number is. Since the one-time purchases are not going to stay on our books from year to year, are we looking at, if we have enough left over from the transportation, are we going to be targeting one or the other, mental health or the one-time purchases, the sustainability of the district? I ask that in, because I'm thinking, is there a way to massage the mental health services and the one, so kind of both components get some kind of enhancement? Because I'm sure the marketing man would love new uniforms after 21 years, but I'm sure there's some students, students who would really benefit from a social worker in the school. So I want to make sure that we can kind of strike a balance there.
I will tell you how we would do that, Mr. Tomio, and I want the full board to understand our thinking and for the community to, to hear it as well. I showed my cards in my response to Mrs. Weiss's question. If the operating budget does not afford us the flexibility to bring in social workers, we will use the federal stimulus aid to do that. It is not ideal, because then we have a clock ticking and figure out a way to bring into the operating budget, but for me, and I hope to have the support of the board of this, enhancing our mental health services for students is non-negotiable. So if we can't do it within the operating budget, we will do it, using federal stimulus dollars, which would then leave, we hope, the flexibility for the one-time purchases. And as I explained on Monday, and I'll repeat, it is financially healthy to have one-time purchases included in this budget, because we know that the level of aid we are likely to receive from New York State next year will decrease. The way to prepare for decreased revenue is to have planned decreased expenses. So when you include one-time expenses in your budget, you know that when you do the rollover budget, those items get removed. So to have a financially stable, long-term plan, it would be in our best interest to include the one-term purchases in this year's budget, and then make the mental health services for our students non-negotiable, and if we can include them in the budget, use the federal stimulus dollars to, to finance those initiatives.
Thank you.
I, from a budgeting standpoint, I understand the dropping off of the one-time purchases, and I didn't want to compare dollars and cents to the mental health of our students, but from dollars and cents standpoint, those falling off for our budget-to-budget for next year would make more sense.
And I, I'm sorry, Ms. Tomio.
I was just going to say, as far as the mental health component, definitely a short-term need, we need it now, the students are going to come back and need it. I know it's not precarious for a person to take a job with a time, you know, expiration date on their employment, but I would hope that if we were able to use the federal funds, we can do so, with the understanding that maybe it will fall off in three years, and it's something that the district won't have sustainability in and keep moving forward. But I think the benefits of a short-term enhancement to our mental health component is necessary, because I don't know if this is something, given the, you know, financial outlook of what our district may look like from year to year going forward, that this is something we could sustain. So if we can utilize the federal money now, wonderful, we can't sustain it, we got the benefits where we can utilize the money.
And again, and yes, you're correct, and I would, again, say that we have three budget cycles to figure it out, and there are things that, you know, year to year fluctuate, our enrollment being one of them, retirements being another, and I would hope that during a three-year period of time, we could find financial flexibility to bring grant-funded programs into the operating budget, you know, when we have three years to figure it out. And I have confidence in the administration and board's ability to do that in partnership. And to answer your question in plain English, and I, and I really want the community to hear this, because I'm hopeful that they are excited about these enhancements and, and think about that when voting, I would like to see, even though we have some unfortunate news about increases in other areas, transportation specifically, I would like to say with confidence that because of the federal stimulus, we will be able to make the yeoman's share of these one-time purchases, as well as hire the necessary social workers to fully staff our buildings.
Perfect, thank you. One other thing, I was wanting to just bring to attention, Lorraine, you can definitely speak to this, please. When Ms. Weiss was speaking about allocating a percentage across each line item, the one that stuck out to me was the healthcare cost. Obviously, as an outlier, that contractual increase or health insurance, we would never budget line to line with that increase, right? Can you just go back to the administrative, the capital, and the program, those components of our budget? Because 73% of our, of our budget is our program, and I just want some clarity for the board and the community, the part, the program component is encompassed of our teacher salaries and contractual agreements, and that's why we kind of see that portion, that component of our budget increase so much.
Yes, the, the program directly relates to anything directly related to the students, I mean, everything in the school district is related to the students, but the program component is, consists of all teacher salaries, all teacher benefits, you know, material supplies, anything that's directly going into the classroom. So it is the largest piece, and it always has been the largest component of the budget. I would say that that is true for most any school district.
100%. I just remember years ago, looking at a school budget, I was like, wow, program, the kids are getting a lot here. And 73% is not going towards the kids, going to the contractual agreement. So I just want to make sure that was out there for the public. And then one little minute thing that I just want to touch upon, because it's come up, I received a question on it, and I don't know where it is, so I can't tell you the slide, is the maintenance and security vehicle?
Yes.
Questions have come up saying, well, if it went on fire, why did the district not get insurance money? And I think we know the, the vehicle was older than me.
Yes, I believe that the vehicle was a 1987 truck with a plow on it that we, you know, really mostly utilized during snowstorms, and it did catch fire during one of the snowstorms this past year. We did, we do have insurance on all of our vehicles, and I believe we received, I'm going to say about $700 for the value of that truck.
Actually, the comp and collision was on it, obviously, because of the years and the life.
Value of the truck itself was.
That is why, just wanted the clarity for that as well, because people are asking, well, if the truck went on fire, where's the insurance money? And that's why.
That, that is the insurance money, yes.
Thank you.
And that's probably because it was so old, you don't get replacement.
Yeah.
Like, I was a new car.
Right, yeah, that, like, I know we all use in our, our real lives, like Kelley Blue Book value, that doesn't.
Yes.
Correct, just because the year of the truck isn't on there, I think people are raising their eyebrows, saying, why are you putting that in an enhancement?
I'm sure the amount of miles on it, and like I said, it had a plow, it wasn't in pristine condition, it was a, I'll call it like a utility truck that we used, you know, for maintenance and building.
It caught on fire, it makes sense. It was old.
Thankfully, the one was hurt.
Yes, thankfully.
Lorraine, can I ask a question about the vehicles? Are we allowed, I don't know if it's even financially feasible to do this, but are we allowed to lease, or can we only purchase vehicles?
I, I do not know the answer to that question. I believe we are allowed to lease, but I don't think it's recommended.
Okay.
Because it would put us into.
Probably because it puts some mileage on it?
By leasing, it puts us into a multi-year contract, if you will.
Okay.
And that's difficult to build into the budget at that level.
And the expense of the lease would be reoccurring, where the truck you purchased in five years, that debt falls off the books, and then you own the vehicle, so from a budgeting standpoint, you wouldn't want to lease.
So we would pay for it outright?
Yes.
And then you own it, and you would expense it over the life of the vehicle, and then you have that right off and done.
Right, the value would diminish immediately, I mean, as it does with any vehicle. But even if we have the capability to purchase a vehicle, doesn't mean, I mean, we would always like to purchase something new, it would last much longer, but there are other options we can look at.
And, and please, board understand, and for the community present, we don't walk to the lot and shop like residents do, we, we bid off a state contract.
Yes.
It's negotiated.
Yep.
So the state does the yeoman's share of the negotiations on our behalf.
Okay, thanks for that, thanks for clearing that up.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Dunkel. Any other questions? Seeing none, that brings us up to our residents' remarks, and the residents' remarks this evening, for this portion of the agenda will pertain to just remarks regarding the 2021-2022 budget, and we will have residents' remarks, second residents' remarks later on for any questions or comments, but the first residents' remarks this evening, since it is a budget hearing, will pertain to just anything pertaining to the budget presentation from Ms. Dunkel. That said, is there any residents' remarks this evening? I will read the blurb then. The board encourages all residents to attend its meetings, and this section of the agenda affords them the opportunity to speak. Persons wishing to speak should identify themselves and any organization they represent at the meeting. Comments related to the district business or any agenda item should be kept as brief as possible and may not exceed three minutes, Board Policy 2351. Questions or comments concerning matters which are not on the agenda will be taken under consideration and may be discontinued by the president. Public discussions of matters relating to staff, students, or other, as at which the reputations, privacy, or right to due process could in some way be violated, is prohibited. Good evening, Ms. Curran, the mic is yours.
Good evening.
Good evening. I just had a couple of questions. The first one stemming from the budget newsletter that just came out. Under the budget highlights, there was a statement that the budget would maintain all programs K to 12 and provide several enhancements. And then a few bullet points down, it says, "Maintain breadth and depth of core course offerings and extracurricular activities to the greatest extent possible." Those two statements just seemed a bit contradictory to me upon reading. So I was wondering if you could provide a bit of clarification on that.
Dr. Bossler?
Sure. Mrs. Curran, the extracurricular opportunities and some athletic programs that we offer each year fluctuate based upon student interest. And we do require some minimum enrollments for extracurricular activities before we finance them. Clubs need to have a minimum number of students participate. So I don't want to make a false promise to the community that says everything that exists this year will exist next year, because some things are heavily reliant upon student choice.
Okay. Yeah, because that statement in bold, I think, maybe gives an impression that everything is being maintained if somebody doesn't read, you know, the print below. So that's why I just wanted to seek some clarification on that. And my second question, at the PTA council meeting, one of the points mentioned, and I understand we don't know exactly how federal funding can be allocated yet, but a point was mentioned that it may allow the period of excellence to return at the high school. I was wondering whether consideration may also be given to restoring the core extension period the way it was originally intended at the middle school? Because I think that was a really great opportunity for a bit of enrichment for the students at the middle school as well.
Thank you.
Anybody? If there was a question, whether there was any?
I can't give you a yes or no to how we're going to use federal stimulus dollars that we haven't been fully advised of yet. You know, I mentioned at the PTA meeting different things that we're exploring. But I can further answer the question by saying we're exploring everything. We want to make sure that the programs that we offer to students have something for everyone. And I am confident that Dr. Hall will work with all members and all stakeholders to make sure that all ideas are heard and that all opportunities are explored.
Thank you.
Certainly.
Thank you, Ms. Curran.
Hi, my name is Agapie Pepe. I'm representing just myself and my household. So first, on the budget, I want to thank everyone who created it. I think it's very thoughtful. I think every time I listen to a presentation, I learn something new. And I think what I heard tonight about the priority list and the one-time expenses, it makes a lot of sense to me. So I appreciate that explanation and how having some debt has helped us. So I've learned all that. So thanks, Ms. Dunkle, for explaining all that throughout all the different meetings. My biggest concern about the budget is the buses. It's, I think I've mentioned it throughout the years, I'm not a fan of the buses, of having them at ILO. It seems like years ago, eight, nine years ago, when we've had issues with money, it's always such a large line item. I don't know if it's prudent to do an assessment, like the surveys. I actually think the community surveys give you a lot of information. It helped us with the return, it helped us with the barriers. Like, you get a snapshot of where everyone is at, and if they're even care enough to apply. So with the buses, I mean, it just seems, you know, do we have recourse for the governor and the state attorney generals and the IG that you mentioned? I asked about this before, you know, with price gouging. And it seems like we only got one company to reply to us, and now we have that information. So do we have recourse? Is there like a collective bargaining thing? All the different districts on Long Island can get together and say something, you know? Or does the government step in when the market is failing? That's what I keep thinking. Or do we do a referendum and vote to have no buses? And we all drive our neighbors' kids as a collective, which is what we're doing? And do we just expand that? So I'm just thinking, I love everything else in the budget. I love how thoughtful you've been. I love all the things I see on the agenda with the Regents Review classes and the credit recovery programs. I think you're spending the money pretty wisely. But this is beyond your control, obviously. So I'm wondering, what's the recourse?
Thank you, Ms. Bell. It is, you know, the cloud over the budget this year is the transportation. It's unfortunate that an ancillary item is what is hindering the ability to, you know, grow program and benefit the children. But to answer your questions, I had similar questions. I'm going to let Dr. Bossler give you the specifics as to those points that you made.
Thank you. Very kind words, Mrs. Bell, by the way. With transportation, it is an unknown at this point, but it became clear today. We know that we will be negotiating with our current vendor, Huntington Coach, and we need to give them the opportunity to negotiate. And obviously, I can't discuss numbers and specifics at a public meeting, because that would be outside of the legality of entering into a fair negotiation. I wouldn't want to say that we need to look for recourse from the Attorney General's office or anything of that nature, until which time we've given Huntington Coach the opportunity to enter into fair and reasonable negotiations. I would say that most commercial entities, when entering into negotiations, will start high. We intend to go as low as possible. But to answer some of your questions, we are legally obligated to provide transportation services to students. That's not an option that we have. To change the dynamic of transportation services would require voter referendum. Obviously, we're not prepared to enter that in this year's budget. If there were to be any significant ground swell or desire from the board to consider that for next year, it would have to be attached to next year's budget vote or a special referendum regarding transportation. But as I said at the PTA meeting, I'll really have to say again, in order to eliminate transportation services, you have to extend the radius in which students walk. And because of the busyness and traffic of some of the roads that surround our school properties, I would be very hesitant as superintendent to recommend that we expand that circle further. This year has been a wonderful partnership with parents and their ability to provide transportation to students. But I think it's also been eye-opening to those parents who are doing it for the first time just how much we can appreciate when the bus service is working and working efficiently. So my intent is to work with Huntington Coach to come up with a reasonable agreement. We know the increase will not be at CPI. But I also feel very confident that the negotiations will be fruitful in that we can find something reasonable that does work within our budget and continues to provide the transportation that our students require and deserve. And I hope to be able to incentivize our parents to begin using those buses with greater frequency in September. We've been having some logistical concerns at arrival dismissal at each of our buildings based upon the increased frequency. We have disrupted the length of our instructional day in our buildings based upon parent transportation. So assuming that COVID accommodations allow for greater capacity on buses, and some of those restrictions have already been increased, I will have an all-out campaign encouraging parents to use those buses that we're now paying more money for.
Okay, so good luck in the negotiations. And we might know when, July?
We will certainly know before July 1st, the results of negotiations, because we have to have the contract in place at that time.
Okay, that's what I thought. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bell. So you, Ms. Mays, but Ms. Marcus jumped up first.
An Agapie-sized microphone. Hi, Becky Marcus, Agapie. Mrs. Bell triggered my question. I know that last year, we, obviously, like all school districts, did not use buses from mid-March through the remainder of the year. And I know that the board kept the bus company on retainer in essence. And I thought that was to preserve a preferred rate going forward. So we were paying the bus company, although we were not using the buses, and they were providing no service, to get a preferred rate. So I may have missed a prior discussion on this, but I guess we did not get that preferred rate?
You want to ask, inter with haste like I would?
So the, last year, when we negotiated with the bus company to continue paying a portion of their expenses, we did agree to continue with their services, and it was for this year only. They agreed to roll over at CPI for the 2021 school year, if, you know, as part of the agreement, to pay some of their partial services.
So we did benefit from that decision this current year?
Yes, for this, correct.
Okay. And then I would just offer, perhaps, since I know that we were, not all districts did that, correct? We thought we were smart doing that. So maybe, you know, we can remind them and maybe get a credit of that money that we laid out with zero service.
As it turns out, Mrs. Marcus, all the districts did take very similar actions to the Elwood School District. And the better news is that the state only recently decided that we could have aid on that money that we spent. The state made that decision to pay aid on those reduced rates, because every district either paid a reduced rate or the full rate. Yeah.
All right, thank you.
I think, Ms. Marcus, to piggyback off of that, that is why at the last meeting, we spoke about possibly entertaining a multi-year contract with the bus company. So we posture ourselves in a position that we're not in right now. At least we lock ourselves in for two, three, whatever years we can get out of them to keep at least a snapshot of what we're going to be budgeting for, because we can't have this surprise every year. So I think that's where we're at now, too.
Ms. Tomlin, if I may, use this opportunity, since we are talking about our transportation contract so extensively. I had mentioned it during my video update to the community yesterday, but I'll say it again in this public forum. We will be sending a postcard to every household, which is an addendum to our budget newsletter, which indicates our desire to enter into a multi-year contract with our transportation company. We're legally required to notify voters that we are negotiating a multi-year commitment in this budget cycle. We did not have that information at the time of the design of our budget newsletter. And without that notification, the district would be handcuffed into only discussing a one-year agreement with Huntington Coach. The way to get the best value and give us the most, forgive me, leverage during negotiations is to discuss a multi-year agreement, therefore making the postcard legal notification a requirement and the reason why you'll be receiving those in your household.
Thank you, Dr. Bossler. Ms. Mays, you're going to have to start jumping up, because they're beating you to the microphone.
Hi, board. Dr. Bossler, this is Tom Weiss. I have a question, Ms. Dunkle. With regards to those additional line items, like uniforms and things like that, is there any way to get donations for those types of things, like from our endowment, like different?
Do you have your checkbook with you, Mr. Weiss?
Not me, I'm all tapped out.
Fair enough.
Kids in college, but I'm just saying, we have other things there. Is it allowable, like a truck being donated by a dealership and putting their logo on it or something? Is that things that we can look at?
I was adamantly nodding yes till you added the logo. At the discretion of the Board of Education, the board may always receive generous donations from community organizations or individuals. Where there is some legality is from corporations or sponsorship. So if the local Chevy dealer wanted to donate a truck because they support education, we could take it. If they wanted to put their logo on the site to advertise their business, we would not be able to. But if an individual were to say, I'm a tremendous supporter of athletics, here's $10,000, the board has the discretion of accepting that $10,000 and using it to offset the cost of uniforms, 100%.
Okay. But is that something we are looking at doing? Or like, publicizing possibly as an option there?
Yeah, we do, forgive me, Ms. Tomlin, for this.
You know where I stand on this, Dr. Bossler, so go ahead.
We do have some active organizations within our community, the Booster Clubs and other entities that continuously supply us with the funding. And the board has always been very gracious in receiving those donations and using them with the intent in which the outside organization has provided the funding. Going out for additional fundraising opportunities and things like that, we've been having lots of discussion about. And we are lucky that we have some residents who are really looking to take the charge on rallying the troops in support of that.
And those items are not a lot. I mean, it's something to help cut it if possible. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. I will tell you, when I first got on the board, I was still a college student, St. Joseph's. And Nike had donated all the equipment and everything just for a logo on the scoreboard. When I ran, I was very excited to say Nike will give Elwood all the uniforms and everything for free, and we're not allowed. So I hear you, because that would be wonderful. And although it's not a lot of money, it would definitely reduce our burden to the taxpayer.
I will just say, as a prior, you know, president of the Elwood Booster Club, that's what we did. We funded arts, athletics, and academics. You know, we brought summer programs to this school district. We created a ton of revenue stream into this district. And with the pandemic, there's no camps being run, there's no revenue, there's no after-school clubs. Our whole after-school club program came to a screeching halt this year. So there's just no revenue stream coming in, so it's very difficult. The money that the Booster Club had last year, they don't have anymore. There's nothing. The PTA is struggling, households are struggling. Hopefully, when we can get back to some normalcy and get kids back in the building and start doing after-school programs and camps, we can start having like a real flow, because, you know, we're negative $137,000 in that line item based on tuition. But we used to be in the black, because the Booster Club, you know, would donate, you know, $50,000, $60,000, sometimes $70,000. The Elwood Endowment was $50,000, $60,000, $70,000. I mean, that adds up, but we're in very different times right now. Hopefully, the pendulum's swinging the other way, and we can start getting back to those days.
Dr. Bossler, correct me if I'm wrong, we do have, I know last year the camps weren't ran, but the Elwood Athletic Club, one of their main focuses is the money that they raise, some of the proceeds go directly to benefit sports programs.
You are correct, Ms. Tomlin.
Okay, so we do have that. Just unfortunate, we didn't have the camps last year. Glad to hear they're back this year. I know it's a wonderful thing for the Elwood community. So, thank you. All right. Nobody else is allowed to get up, because Ms. Mays is up at the microphone.
Hi, Victoria Mays. I represent my Mays family. So this is my first time actually looking through a budget and for the school district. For the school district. And, you know, Ms. Dunkle, had to go ahead and clarify that some of the line items were not just for salary. So as a voter, as a community member, I'm looking at that thinking, yeah, that must incorporate like the cumulative expenses for each respective line item. So for example, for 300K for debt, 871 debt, debt for the bond, line items 9711, 9780, 9789, respectively. I would assume that there are other subsets underneath all of those in the spreadsheet? Is it possible to be able to see a little bit more granularity with the budgets? Or is there a quarterly report that gets posted? I know that there's an audit, but I've never seen a quarterly. It would help me as a voter to understand where the money was going. And it would also, you know, right now, we're theoretically voting on a lot of unknowns, like COVID unknowns, transportation is the unknown. It would make me a little bit more comfortable to see a little bit more granularity. Is that a possibility? Or do I ask that?
No, that is a report that can be requested. But we do, as part of the monthly financials that are issued to the board, we have a financial report that goes to the board on a monthly basis. There is a report in there. It's called an appropriation status report. It does go into a little bit more granularity than this will. That may help you. But if you, you know, if you have any questions, you can always reach out to me directly.
Okay.
But that is, the appropriation status report is available on a monthly basis to the board.
But is that available, that would be available to me if I had asked for it?
It's on our website.
Okay, so.
So each month on the, as part of the agenda, and I believe it's on this month as well, when we prepare the monthly financial reports, one of those items is the appropriation status report.
Okay, so I guess my other question is, so thank you for that. That'll be very helpful. In regards to the federal stimulus, it's my understanding that, make sure it'll be around $1.4 million. Do you? Do you, do you know that for sure? Or is it going to be maybe more the first year and then a cascading amount in the subsequent years thereafter?
I really look forward to presenting more specific information on the federal stimulus grants after we receive.
Okay.
The total dollar figure that the district will be receiving is 3.8 million dollars split between the two, the two grants. It is divided over three years. We will have some latitude in the method in which we use the money, but there will be some minimum requirements of what percentage of the money is used each year.
And then it's my understanding that you have to receive guidance on how that stimulus money will need to be deployed? Is that how that goes? Like, do they have to, I assume that they ha, they can dictate how that money is spent to a certain degree or?
Very much so. There'll be some very specific guidelines for what purposes the money can be used and the duration in which we have it. The focus of the federal stimulus grant is to make up for the time or the quality of the instruction that was disrupted by the pandemic. And as I said at the PTA meeting, there are districts that have been hit far worse than the Elwood School District by, by the pandemic. Communities where students were not in the school buildings. This is a national program. So communities where students were not in the school buildings at all during the year, communities that did not have internet connectivity so students could remote in, students who had full year of disrupted instruction. So this money is to close those gaps. We are fortunate in Elwood that the gaps we have to close are certainly real, but they are smaller than what some of our, our neighbors and certainly other states will experience. So again, we look forward to presenting different options and different programs that the, that the stimulus aid will support.
And my last question is in regards to the reserves. There's, I understand it's ESR reserves is around $800,000, correct?
The ER, ERS reserve.
ERF, sorry.
Yes, Employees Retirement System. As part of our budget revenue, we're allocating $800,000, yes.
Okay, and do you have offhand the total reserves number for, it's my understanding that school districts can have several different reserve funds. Is there a total reserve number?
I don't want to misspeak, but we do, we have, we have, I believe, five or six different reserves. We have an Employees Retirement System Reserve, a Teachers Retirement Reserve, we have an EBOLAR, which is for employee benefits upon termination. It's for accrue, it's Accrude Liabilities Reserve. We have a capital reserve that was approved by the voters a few years ago. We have a reserve for unemployment that actually came in handy last year. But yeah, there is a multitude of reserves that does add up to a particular dollar amount. I don't want to misspeak.
That's okay.
On the dollar amount, but that is something that actually would be available next month because we do review the fund balance estimate with the Board of Education, so that will most likely be on the June Board of Education meeting.
Okay, so, you know, I know, I asked this the other night at the PTA meeting. So I'm always looking at it from a banker's hat perspective and how do we pull money out of nowhere, right? How do we put the money to work? So my question the other night was, can we invest any of that reserves money? And it's my understanding that according to the website, we, we can invest some of it, there's a treasurer here, right? So even if you did a three-month CD at the current rate off of around $800,000, right? If we put that money to work, that would be roughly for three months, around $300 for one year, around $1,300. I understand there's a need for liquidity, but if that money is sitting in reserves, even every little bit, I would think would count at this point, no?
It, I wouldn't disagree with you, but investing, I think, and our treasurer is here, thank you. We do look at that, you know, on probably a monthly to bimonthly basis about investing. It's just, there hasn't been very good rates to invest. It's not something that school districts do very often, but we have to be careful. Like, you're talking about the $800,000. When we allocate that to the budget, then it becomes restricted, so we can't touch it at that point.
I understand, that's why I said liquidity. So there's like, you know, even if you did the CD ladders and it's a very simple, so three months, six months, nine months, one year, you know, that's what I'm saying, you know, is, does all of that have to just sit there in such a low yield or can, can you tier it? Like, it's just an idea to, to bring a little bit more money to the table. It may seem nominal, but it, it seems to me like, you know, as I have been talking about fundraising efforts, that we need it. So I, that's why I'm asking, I keep asking.
Also, I just wanted to put, the reserves, the reserve balances that we have on our, as part of the entire fund balance of the school district, that's part of our entire cash reserve. And we have cash projections that are done monthly throughout the school year. So again, because of liquidity, we have to make sure that we have that money available because we, we don't always have the cash, so the reserves plays into that.
Okay, so you're just gonna, okay, all right.
I will tell you, we are always looking at options where we may be able to invest. We are doing everything we can to obtain, you know, the most revenue we can for the school district. We're not sitting there with millions of dollars in.
No, I understand, I'm just, you know, trying to throw out ideas just in case someone doesn't have them yet or.
We love the banker's hat.
Assuming that you've already looked at that other kind of stuff.
We love the banker's hat, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. I'm gonna take it off now and sit back down.
Mrs. Mays, I just wanted to point out, if you want to jot it down, on tonight's agenda, if you go under N, Financial Matters, and then one, you'll be able to find the Budget Status Report and many, many other reports where you can see cash flow and all those other things. If you want to take a look at it there, you can access it there as well.
Yeah, so I, I looked through that, I just didn't, I didn't see a ton of granularity. I looked through the entire budget summary, printed everything out. But I guess what I'm advocating for is for, if there are people out there like me who are willing to comb through reports and try to gain an understanding if they could be readily available. And Ms. Dunkle answered my question for the Appropriation Status Report that's on the website, so I'm good, thank you.
Is there any other residence remarks this evening? It's Crowley? No? All right. Can't see with the mask on the back. Dr. Zanka, no?
Yeah.
Correct, just about the budget hearing. We will have a second residence remark later in the agenda. All right, thank you. If we may, Dr. Bossert, I know we're up to the superintendent's report, but Mr. Work did walk in and he unfortunately walked in a couple minutes and had to get stuck with that whole budget presentation, so, Mr. Work, Mr. Work, please come on up and we'd love to hear your report tonight.
Yes?
Mr. Work, I'm sorry, one second, I flipped over my page. I do need to close the portion of the budget hearing, I apologize. I have a motion to close this portion of the budget hearing, motion by Mrs. Weiss, second by Mrs. Mammalito. Questions or comments? We have plenty, see none, or in favor? Five, zero. Thank you, Mr. Work, sorry about that.
And I apologize for arriving late and I appreciate you allowing me the chance to speak. Thank you. Good evening to the members of the Board of Education, Dr. Bossert and the community. Tonight, I'll be reporting on the news in the Elwood School District for the month of April. The high school has continued to find new ways to enhance the student experience this year. RAP exams, which are normally held in early May, are now offered in a series of three different administrations with options to take the exams in school, at home, on Chromebooks, and with traditional pen and paper. I'd like to acknowledge Mr. McNamara, our AP Coordinator and Assistant Principal, for making this confusing process seamless, giving John Glenn students the best opportunity to succeed on these exams. I'd also like to highlight the ways the school district and the greater community have gone out of their, gone out of their way to make these final months for our seniors extra special. I want to thank Mrs. Mammalito, along with many senior parent volunteers, for bringing senior sweatshirts to the doorsteps of every John Glenn High School senior this past month. On behalf of the whole grade, we truly appreciate this kind gesture and loved wearing them together as a grade the next day in school. As the seniors approach the final two months of high school, the class has chosen Bryn Geird to be the Class of 2021 Graduation Speaker. Each year, with the help of the summa cum laude students, the grade collects adjectives that embody the class and then nominates a speaker based on these qualities. Bryn, who spoke with me at a prior board meeting regarding, regarding senior priority in the district's reopening plan, is an exemplary student at John Glenn and a great choice to speak on behalf of the class. Harley Avenue and the middle school have also been busy adapting to the changes to provide the best experience for students. At Harley, the students and staff are looking forward to warmer weather and even more time outdoors. The school PTA also organized a wonderful staff appreciation grab-and-go luncheon for the staff that work so hard each day for the students of Harley Avenue. At the middle school, there have been a multitude of transition activities, allowing current fifth grade students to experience the middle school and the now eighth graders a chance to visit the high school. End-of-year events like field days and barbecues are also being planned for each grade and the eighth graders are having a moving up ceremony and an eighth grade dance, albeit this year in a different way. These events are more important than ever to commemorate what has been a challenging year for all of us. Thank you again and have a great evening.
Thank you, Mr. Work. Follow that, Dr. Bossert.
Thank you, Dan, and I hope that, although typically, you know, you presented at the beginning of the meeting and then we invite you to excuse yourself, I hope that the discussion about the budget gives you a little more insight. You know, I know this is an area of interest for, for you and I hope that although it was time, that you found it to be valuable and we certainly appreciate you coming down and your continued reports to the community. But at any time that you would like to depart, it's at your discretion. Thank you, Dan. I am going to yield the largest portion of my time, as we are already late into our agenda tonight, to the Health and Nutrition Committee report, but I do want to reiterate a portion of something that I presented yesterday in my community video update and some notification that went home today. I have to be candid, I have been trying to arrange for the Elwood School District to serve as a vaccination point of distribution, commonly known as a POD, since January. I have tried to form partnerships with our local medical providers, with our local hospitals, with Suffolk County Department of Health, and I really found a lot of dead ends. They are looking to service as many folks as possible, so when they were selecting school districts to, to partner with, we were not at the top of the list, although I fought very hard to try to get there. I was very relieved to finally be able to find a partner in Walmart. Walmart has pharmacies and trained pharmacists and access to the COVID-19 vaccine. At this time, Dr. Siddiqui, as always, please interject if I misspeak, at this time, only the Pfizer vaccine has been approved in use for children 16 years and older, and we are making that vaccine available to our students 16 years and older on May the 19th and the second dose on June the 9th. All the information went home to high school parents today. I would ask them to review it very carefully and consider taking this opportunity. As I said in the letter, there is no part of this vaccine that is currently a requirement, nor is there any pressure in any kind that if you wish your child to be vaccinated, that you bring them to John Glenn High School to do that. We wanted to make the vaccination as readily available to our residents 16 and older as possible, so we partnered with Walmart to make those vaccination appointments available during the school day. As I indicated in the letter, there was no ideal time on the school calendar that remaining, so there is some thought that has to be given to the school, to the students who are scheduled for AP testing. There are 35 students aged 16 and over who are scheduled to be tested on an AP exam the day of the first dose, so parents have to give that some thought. And there are four students that are scheduled to be AP tested the, the date of the second dose. But I would ask the community to give that careful consideration, have good conversation with their students who are 16 and under, and if they feel this opportunity is one they'd like to take advantage of, to respond in, in the affirmative to the survey that was sent home today. Walmart does need a headcount, the last thing we want is to waste vaccines. So the number of students we tell them would like to receive the dose is the number of doses they will prepare for us. And again, we don't want any serum to go to waste. So with that said, that helps to piggyback on some of the work that has been taking place from the Health and Nutrition Committee. As the community is aware, the Board of Education has several vibrant and active committees that support the work that they do from a governance level. One of them is Health and Nutrition, which is the administrative, forgive me, the administrative liaison to the committee is Mr. Shanahan, as our Director of Health, Physical Education and Athletics. And our community, and our board co-chairs are Dr. Siddiqui and Mrs. Mammalito, and I believe they have a report prepared to share tonight.
Hi, good evening. Thank you, Dr. Bossert. And yeah, that was a good piggyback from the vaccines to the Health and Wellness Committee. So I had the honor of sitting on the Health and Wellness Committee with Mrs. Mammalito and Mr. Shanahan and several of our district nurses and the community members. And it was, it was a really great committee to be on for me. So I'm just gonna read a little bit about what Mr., what Mr. Shanahan sent over. So the Elwood Health and Wellness Committee of the Board of Education developed a really fun, family-oriented program to support the physical, mental, and social emotional health of Elwood students and families. So what we started talking about was because of COVID-19, we really felt that we should pursue a way to bring about improvement in our mental wellness in our students. So we really came up with a challenge. It was called the Elwood Challenge, and we even had a Twitter account made, which I don't know if many of you logged on to, but it was really fun and amazing. And what we did was come up with two different calendars. One was Foundation, which was kind of like basic movements on a day-to-day basis, and one was a more challenging type movement. So what these were, what, what the calendars were, based on a word of the week, and then you kind of follow each day and do a movement, let's say 10 push-ups or four sit-ups, with your family at home. So we really thought that this was a great thing to do to bring the families into the health and wellness part of it and incorporate everybody into it. So we wanted teachers and gym, and in gym class and even a big buzz about it all over the school. So this was a K through 12 initiative. And, and it really, and it really worked well. We're still looking at, you know, what the results were because it was kind of a competition. We didn't want to make it too much of a, you know, we didn't want to make it too much of a competing or a competition, but we wanted people to get involved. And if you did get involved and if you did complete the challenges in both months, you will get a prize. So we're still working on, you know, how many students receive that. And it was a, it was a, it was a great, it was a great thing to be a part of. Mrs. Mammalito, did you have anything to add?
No, you explained it pretty well. It was a great, it was a great initiative to be a part of. You know, we need healthy minds and healthy bodies and it was fun, so.
Thank you both for serving in that capacity. And Dr. Siddiqui, obviously, your lens is crucial and much appreciated, so thank you for being in that role and Ms. Mammalito as well, for being in that role on that committee for us, appreciate it. Dr. Bossert, do you have anything else in your superintendent's report this evening?
That concludes my report for this evening, Mr. Tom.
Thank you. That brings us up to our second residence remarks. There will be a third residence remarks. I apologize for that. We have one at the tail end of the meeting as well, but I will open up a residence remark and this does not have to be pertaining to the budget hearing. This is our first residence remarks and the blurb still stands from before. Thank you.
Becky Marcus, representing myself, my son, and probably a few other parents, but not officially. I'm reacting to the news that was revealed in the video message. I do watch Dr. Bossert's video messages. And I did participate in the plastic barrier survey. I was one of the 65% that said that we are ready to get rid of them. In light of the fact that the CDC not only says that they are not effective as any safety precaution, the CDC actually recommends their removal because they are ineffective and they are obstruction, they are obstructive in the classroom and can be isolating for students. New York State Department of Health, as they often do, has adopted that CDC guideline. So they're also saying they are no longer necessary because they are ineffective as a safety measure. And then, which we're grateful for, we had the parent survey and 65% of those that responded say, let's get rid of them. So CDC says, get rid of them. New York State says, you can get rid of them. And parents of a majority say, let's get rid of them. So I was disappointed to hear in the video message that outside of So I was disappointed to hear in the video message that outside of a few, I think Dr. Bossert hinted that there were a few personal emails sent to him in objection, but truly he put the onus on internal stakeholders and that faculty were uncomfortable with removing of the barriers currently. And there was a lot mentioned in the video about the sacrifices that faculty have made over the past year, put in uncomfortable positions, you know, did things that they maybe didn't want to do under the encouragement of Dr. Bossert and the board. I would like to offer that students as young as kindergartners, like my fifth grade son in elementary, have been discomforted over the course of the year. And they have been so because the board has followed the guidelines given to them by the CDC and the guidelines that they were required to follow by the state. So students have been, you know, burdened, discomforted, you know, having a total classroom change of environment. We're grateful to be in the classroom, but we do want some more normalcy. And the one minute that these restrictions and protocols are lifted and we could have less of a burden for our students, we don't do it. So I'm starting to realize that there are some inequities amongst stakeholders. And I'm wondering what is the board's position, because we heard Dr. Bossert's position, but I'm wondering why is it that the board, so maybe, Mr. Tomio, you can answer it, why would the board, with the CDC recommendation, the New York State's lifting of that burden, why would you choose the discomfort of faculty over the discomfort of students, including elementary-age students?
Thank you, Ms. Marcus. So I will not speak for the entirety of the board, so if the board would like to answer, they may. I don't want to speak for them in a vacuum, it's not my role. But as far as the survey went, that is correct, that was 65% of the population who took the survey. I don't know the statistics as far as what the sample set would have been as far as every parent participating in the survey, so I will balk to Dr. Bossert on that. Out of that 65%, do we know how many of those parents, do we have 2,000 parents and 65% of all of them took the survey? Is it out of that 2,000, only half took it, and that's the 65% representation, I think?
I think I mentioned it in the video, Ms. Tomio, but we had a one-third response rate to the survey.
Did the board ask to look at the data?
Say again, sorry.
Did you look at the results?
Yes.
Then how come you did not know?
Well, we didn't look at the result of the data, no. I did not look at the result of the data. You were a board member, you know that you charge the administration with doing what's best for the children, so we have charged Dr. Bossert to go out.
And you can ask to see the data?
I did not ask to see the data. I trust my administration. I trust that they are doing what's best in the interest of the children. So when the survey went out, me personally, I trusted the administration's recommendation. Do I agree with it in its entirety? I do not. Okay, I also work in the classroom. They are restrictive. I can't see you right now, it's frustrating. They are restrictive. There is air quality issues as far as I'm breathing into, it's coming back. I don't necessarily disagree with the CDC recommendation, the Department of Health. Personally, I'm not speaking for the Board of Education, I'm speaking as James Tomio, but when the administration makes the recommendation encompasses all stakeholders, and I know you, I can hear you feel that it's an inequity, that the teachers may have had a voice in it, but they are part of the stakeholders.
Well, they were the sole decision-makers, according to Dr. Bossert's message.
That, Dr. Bossert?
And he, and you had reasons for it, it wasn't just unjustified, but I would just offer to you that you are weighing the experience, fears, discomfort, compromise of teachers over students as young as five, and that's very disheartening when we're sitting here talking about mental health for about 20 minutes tonight, about the budget, about this, that, and we're sitting, the CDC says, "Get rid of them," and we're still, you know, putting all these burdens on our kids when we do not need to. And I just find that to be inequitable and a little out of balance.
Well, I will say, excuse me.
It's just a comment, it's really a comment. I wanted to hear how the board felt about it.
That's fine, and I said, I'm not speaking on the Board of Education's behalf, so if you want to hear from all the board members this evening, I will open the floor to all the board members. I told you that I necessarily, my personal views, don't agree with them, but I do, I do appreciate the recommendations of our administration and charge them with following out what they think is in the best interest of both our students and the faculty. We are in the business of education. Children 100% are on the forefront of every decision that we make. That's not saying our teachers and our staff are ancillary in any other decision, but I think we're not alone in this decision. I think, I work in a school district, still have the barriers up. We're in good company. I think people feel that, I'm just throwing it out there, that people are, into the month of May, we have six, seven weeks to go. If this gives security to that 35%, there's still a voice and they still matter. Personally, when we spoke about this, I was more inclined to say, "If Ms. Marcus does not want this for her student, let Ms. Marcus's son remove it." If, sorry, Ms. Bell, I'm looking at you, if Ms. Bell's son wants this, let Ms. Bell's son keep it. That's me personally. I charged the administration, they went out, they did their survey, they made a recommendation. The Board of Education, I won't speak for all of them, but nobody, neither, all five of us had made an objection to it. We all sat there and trusted the decision that our administration has made. I know you've been on the other side of this table and you trust our administration, I won't say you trust our administration personally, because I don't know where you lie, but we charge the administration. We don't do the day-to-day operation, so if we get back to us that that is a solid recommendation, it is in the best interest, maybe not for all, but enough to ease the minds of many, and it's not many because it's 35%, not 65%, but I think that's where the administration made the decision. I will, if you are okay with it, Dr. Bossert can elaborate on why the decision was made. You asked me personally, I gave you my response. I disagree with him. I would like to see him gone, that's me personally.
Mrs. Marcus, I just want to make one point clear that perhaps I didn't make on yesterday's video. The reason for the gap between getting the survey results from parents and announcing a decision was because we had extensive dialogue with our internal stakeholders where they made relevant points that we hadn't previously considered. You know, I thought, and the reason why I proposed, the idea of certain students keeping barriers, certain students carrying their barriers with them as a reasonable accommodations. The teachers shared with me their concern about that in students becoming, feeling ostracized, feeling singled out, feeling different than others because of being identified as a student who would be carrying their barrier, as a student who would have one when their others weren't. The teachers raised to me the issue about eating in the classroom. I didn't realize that even at the secondary level, there's a pervasive necessity to eat in classroom for students that don't have that designated lunch period, and I didn't realize how pervasive that was. I didn't realize that at the elementary building, the teachers have been very creative recently in restructuring the desks outside of rows, putting pods together, using the barriers to remind students to keep their physical space, even though they've brought the desks out of rows and closes together. So in addition to the teachers expressing concern of the removal of the barriers, the teachers also presented insight and expertise that I didn't have from my level and in my position. And it wasn't just the vote of the teachers, it was the perspective that our educators brought to me about the daily experience of the students. And as I said in the video, I knew whichever decision we made, there'd be a percentage of our parents who would be unhappy. So what I attempted to do was to find a compromise to say, "The barriers are staying for now," which I know is disappointing to some parents, "But the barriers will not be here in September." So the parents who were uncomfortable with that, some of our teachers who are uncomfortable for that, you have between now and September 1st to reconcile with the fact that those barriers were no longer in place. We'll be removing our suspenders when we keep our belt on, and I think that we will find ourselves in the majority of districts who take that action. Right now, we're in the majority of districts who have opted to keep the barriers in place through the end of the school year. I do have contacts at the state, you're aware of that. I did my research to find out whether we would be in the minority and majority if we elected to keep them. I have found out we'll be in the largest majority of districts who elected to keep them. The Suffolk County Department of Health's document was interesting. You mentioned the CDC recommendation, and they talked about the reason for the removal of barriers is to increase ventilation in the classroom. That was the rationale for removal of the barriers. It didn't say that they played no role in the prevention of COVID-19 and the spread, you know, if a sneeze takes place or a cough takes place. It didn't speak to that. It said removing them would increase ventilation. Interestingly, this time of year, we've been able to increase the ventilation in the classroom significantly in two capacities. Number one, we're opening the windows, the weather helps us to do that. Number two, and this is the part that I think you'll take most pleasure in, we're leaving the classroom a lot more frequently. You know, I sent our teachers K to 12 a complimentary email today because I see them taking advantage of outdoor learning environments. And when the kids are outside, not only are they not behind their barriers, they're masked off in their distance and they're enjoying outdoor learning, and that is taking place in a very increased capacity across the districts. So that feeling of isolation that you're mentioning and that trap behind the bubble, that has dissipated greatly in both our elementary programs and our secondary programs as our teachers have explored ways to use creativity of outdoor learning. So I do feel comfortable in saying, "Let's keep them for now," because we can do that, whereas next winter, when the windows are closed and we are really restricted, they'll be gone. And I know I can't make everyone happy, but I felt that that compromise was in the best interest of all of our stakeholders, but believe me, the best interest of our children is always in the foremost of my thought.
Yeah, I guess I'm just less concerned with the majority of other districts and more concerned with the majority of parents and students in our district. And I think some of those concerns that you based maybe some of your decisions on, proffered to you by the faculty, you know, is that suddenly going to go away in September?
Well, that-
I mean, I don't think so. So I, it's, it-
That's why I told them now.
To me, it still is, it is choosing a stakeholder group perspective over an other, and the other that you are not choosing has actually the data behind it, and I'm just disappointed in it, and I wanted to share that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Marcus. Hold on, Ms. Bell, I have, I think I have a student coming to the podium. Good evening, how are you? Yep, Ms. Marcus raised it on him.
Hey.
Is that good? Okay. Hi, my name is John, and I'm in seventh grade, and I wanted to talk about the barriers. So I said, "I feel like having barriers in classrooms is not a good idea. When we learn, we're supposed to see, we're supposed to see things, and the glare and smudges from them, I can't see, and it is a major distraction." Sorry. With the hotter, hotter weather rolling in, it will be very hard to concentrate. The barriers are not safe and they get in the way of whoever is walking past it and constantly fall down, and they also break. It's hard to, it's hard to hear the teachers and classmates.
You just have to move your phone away from the microphone. If you could, John, that's, yeah, you got it.
Sorry. It's hard to hear the teachers and classmates. Even though we're in school together, the barriers make us feel isolated. The class feels empty, and I can't tell you how many times people have almost cut or actually cut themselves. I think we should take the, take down and not have to see the barriers ever again.
John, thank you for coming to the podium and speaking this evening. Your sister has joined us a few times as well, so we appreciate your voice, your perspective, and coming up to the podium, it's not easy, so thank you. Dr. Bossert?
Yeah, John, I want to compliment you. It's very, it takes a lot of courage to come to the microphone and speak in front of a lot of people, particularly in this type of formal setting. And I want to make you a promise. I said it to the community yesterday, and I'll say it to you tonight. The barriers won't be here when you return in September, and I hope that once they're gone, you don't see them again. You know, and I made a joke in my video that two of our high school teachers have already talked about creative ways to recycle them, you know, what designs we can make out of them, and Mr. Greening, one of our science teachers, wants to build a greenhouse in the backyard. We might just let him. I appreciate you and your classmates adapting. You know I'm in this building, you know I visit your classrooms, and I've seen, you know, the perseverance that you've had to deal with the challenges, keeping your masks on, staying behind your barriers, focusing despite those challenges, and I'm very proud of you, and I'm very proud of your classmates. So my ask of you is to continue to focus the best you can, try as hard as you can, enjoy the good things that are coming up in May and June, because we have a lot to look forward to in the seventh grade and the rest of the district, and look forward to your summer, and look forward to when you return in eighth grade, the barriers won't be there. And that's a commitment I'm going to make to you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, John.
Hi, Mrs. Bell, representing my own household. So that was apropos, my comment was going to be that at the other meetings last month or a few weeks ago, when the discussion about the survey, about the barriers was going to come up and internal stakeholders were discussed, I assumed students were going to be given the survey as well, at least at the secondary level. You know, they have emails that they are beginning to become accustomed to checking daily, which was a new thing for them, but I see the transition. So I had been asking my middle and high school students, and they never got the survey. So I had assumed that the students were part of the internal stakeholders, and John's comment, you know, that it was exactly what I was thinking, like, the kids were never asked, and I know some are, you know, the younger ones are young, but certainly the high school and middle school students-
Yeah, we did. We spoke to focus groups, we'll call them.
Focus groups.
I have no problem being transparent with the board and community. Students overwhelmingly want the barriers removed.
Right, yes.
There's no question about that.
They can't fit their books and Chromebook at the same time, so it's a tight-
Mrs. Bell, I look forward to removing the barriers. You know, I purposefully used the video to convey the full rationale and give the message because I knew that it was something the community was waiting to hear, and I wanted to make sure I had the time and the focus to share it. It was a very difficult decision, and again, the parents that I've heard from most vigorously since the release of the video are ones whose children are fully remote. I've heard from a good number of parents whose students have not entered our buildings this year and have been 100% remote learners, who told me candidly that the decision to remove the barriers for September was devastating to them. So this has not been an easy decision, nor one entered into lightly, and it's very difficult to find the compromise that's going to satisfy all parties. So the recommendation to remain for the remainder of the year, which is about six weeks of instruction with a lot of time hopefully spent doing good things and outside, not in a classroom, and to give folks the time to prepare for them not to be when we return in September, as I just guaranteed John and every classmate he has that they wouldn't be, that's not welcome news to a percentage of our community. Is it the majority of our community? No. But I do care about the thoughts and opinions of every stakeholder and every resident, and it's very, it was very hard to engage in dialogue with parents who have been so COVID-cautious that they've kept their children in a completely remote learning environment, and they shared with me that despite the recommendations of the CDC, that these barriers make them feel safe and comfortable. And it's interesting that there is an urgency to remove them from classrooms, but every commercial property we walk into as private citizens, whether it's the pharmacy, the grocery store, or a restaurant, those barriers aren't going anywhere. So I understand it's for ventilation, but when I got the Suffolk County document, it was very clear, it was one sentence about the barriers. It said, "Barriers are no longer required, nor are they prohibited." Period. There was no further guidance from the Suffolk County Department of Health because they understood the complexity of the question. So they didn't want to give a directive to school districts to remove them because they know the percentage of stakeholders that are comforted by them, nor did they give a direction that you must keep them because that would be in conflict with the recommendations of the CDC. So I imagine this conversation is happening in many, many communities, which is why I wanted to get a sense of what other communities were doing. And do I believe Elwood always needs to be in the majority? I do not, but I think it's factual information to share with the community that on this particular decision, we will be in the largest majority.
I do appreciate the thought and the complexity of the situation, and I did understand, watching your video, I was like, oh-
And I did understand, watching your video, I was like, okay, you know, just a small portion of us replied and this and that. But what I do caution is that, number one, I didn't know if student focus groups had happened, but I was like, oh, where's the kids' voice? But, you know, this discussion is science versus emotion. So we're talking a lot about certain people's emotional need. I don't want to use the word crutch, but in my mind, I'm like, some people have, we have to start. And then if we don't follow the science, you know, but I do understand the complexity. And I was wishfully okay watching the video, like, okay, we'll wait till the fall. But, you know, I just want to make sure that we're always following the science and including the children's voice. So I thank you for doing the focus groups. I didn't know you did that. And you know where the kids are.
The students-
And John made it abundantly clear.
Students were probably the most unanimous group we had, and I get it. I have sat in a classroom desk and attempted to set up my Surface Pro, have notes. It is a challenge. Even today, I am positioning myself to see you. I look forward to the barriers being removed. However, I wanted to be very responsible and very calculated in that decision. I am pleased that I was given the latitude to make that decision. I appreciate the trust and respect that this community has shown in my leadership. And the notes that I got today were from parents who both agreed and disagreed with the decision. And those that said I disagree with the decision added a caveat to say, but we have trusted your leadership this long, we won't change now, and thank you for your continued, you know, support of our students. And that meant a lot to me.
No, I completely agree with that. I do know you have thought about it heavily, but I just wanted to piggyback on really what John said, because that's where my mind was at, like, where the kids asked.
Oh, we know, we know what the students feel.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bell. Ms. Mays?
Victoria Mays, from my own family. So I have an academics question, and maybe not so much a question, but I understand that mental health is top priority going into this upcoming school year. My concern is, how will we get back to being as competitive as we were before? By nature, just where I came from, the way that I moved up in my life was being able to compete very well in my own school district of Walt Whitman, South Huntington. And so my concern is because of COVID, I know that the school district is trying very hard in regards to curriculum with all the testing and the not doing the testing or redoing the testing, or I mean, I can't even follow it at this point. I just want to make sure that at the same time that we are trying to uplift the children in the community through mental health, we're also not forgetting about the advancement of not just children who are in need of remediation or in the middle, but also the children who are advanced. So I guess I'm trying to advocate for every kid in that whole realm in regards to academics and becoming more competitive again post-COVID, when we recover or as we go onto that path of recovery.
Thank you. I know it's, you're not alone. Many people want to see our students excel post-COVID, and that is definitely, I know, one of our goals, board goals. It's been a board goal is to achieve and have high excellence in our schools. You're right, social, emotional learning and mental health is another goal of the Board of Education. Dr. Bossert, can you speak to what post-pandemic life and our curriculum and the rigor going forward is going to look like in John Glenn and all our buildings?
Sure. Absolutely, and thank you, Mrs. Mays. I'll make two comments. Number one, while this has been a year unlike any other, and our students have certainly faced some challenges along with our faculty in meeting our usual standard of excellence, if we're looking at competitive advantage disadvantage versus our peers, I will measure the Lwood School District against any district on Long Island. I think that as far as making accommodations to help our students to continue to achieve and succeed, we are at the top of the class. So that's the good news. For your comment regarding making sure that there is something for the students who are needing remediation and also those who are looking for support to excel.
I just want to make sure that nobody's-
There will be something for everyone. It is a very, very rare opportunity where we are afforded to grant the size of the federal stimulus that we have been given. And when we design programs and opportunities, they will be designed to meet the needs of students requiring remediation, middle-level support, and acceleration. Those are the types of programs we're most excited to talk about to make sure that there is a hole for every peg. So I look forward to having those conversations.
Okay. And then, so thank you. What is, is a period of, so period of excellence, is that, does, what is that, and does that apply to the younger kids?
The period of excellence is a proposal, and I'll coin the term from Mr. Cole. There are some ongoing discussions that have been taking place for the last several years. Pros and cons of the period of excellence is that in order to capture all the students, one would need to reduce the instructional time in every period. It's essentially adding an additional period to the high school schedule where we can provide remediation enrichment or support in the curriculum areas specific to the child. So we have some hesitancies about that because we don't want to take away instructional time, to add instructional time. But it's a theory and design where we're creating an additional instructional opportunity at the end of the school day, so it's either extra help or enrichment. And it's kind of what you're speaking to, to make sure that we're capturing both groups of students. So whether or not the program will be afforded to students and parents in the manner in which it's been first proposed, I'm not sure, because I'm hesitant to reduce instructional time in the periods. But the concept of having an after-school program that has something for everyone at the secondary level is very attractive to me.
So in response to your comment, I'm sorry to interrupt you. When I was in grade school, they started sectioning us off. Now it's turned into a balanced classroom model, which I can respect as well. But what I would say is that one way to differentiate ourselves competitively in regards, in relation to our peers would be, you know, we don't have the IG program like Three Village, but if we did have a program that was similar, that could be designated in a certain way, couldn't that theoretically be a very positive thing if it went across the board for all, for every, just to uplift us all?
I will answer your question more globally, and I know we're out of time. We intend to create opportunities for students who are advanced in nature to enrich their instructional experience.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Ms. Mays.
I wanted to ask, because you mentioned that one step forward moving towards the fall, we know the barriers will be gone. I want to, I wanted to know where the planning has begun. I know in prior board meetings, we've talked about, and I've gotten the impression, I could be wrong, that, and it sounds like from what you heard from some of the parents who are very concerned about the removal of the barriers. So I'm guessing that there will be an option to remain remote in the fall. Am I right about that?
Million-dollar question. Go ahead, Dr. Bossert.
That is the multi-million dollar question, Mrs. Crowley, and probably the one that has been asked most frequently by school administrators. We've not received any confirmed directives from the New York State Education Department or New York State regarding what remote or distance requirements would be. I have provided some insight to this community. As a member of the Commissioner's Advisory Council, in a meeting that I had recently in Albany, it was shared that it was highly likely that such a directive will come forward, that there will be a remote component required in the fall. Exactly what that will be, I don't know, and exactly how we'll best address it, I don't know. I can tell you that educators across the state are very much looking forward to the end of a hybrid model. It is extremely challenging, as I presented at the PTA meeting on Monday, to instruct a remote environment when you are attempting to be attentive to both the learners in the classroom and the learners in their own homes working remotely. That is really a challenging endeavor. So depending upon the requirement, and depending upon the number of parents who opt to have their children work remotely, we might be looking at a different model, you know? And I look forward to having the rulebook so I can sit with our stakeholders, so I can reassemble our community interest group, and we can say, what is the best way to address this mandate? And we might look at a different model. We might look at a model where both at the elementary level and the secondary level, we have classes completely committed to remote learning so that every classroom at the secondary level doesn't have to take on a hybrid approach. We have to look at that. But I would first like to know what the requirements are. Do I see September looking exactly like January, February? Probably not, probably not. I look forward to making some of those changes. But the first step is to get clear guidance from State Education Department.
Okay. And I am well aware that there are families who have a real legitimate concern, you know, have very compromised children that, you know, need to use that ability. And I also am aware that it has been very difficult this year to handle everything that you've had to handle, you know, we could go on and on about quarantine, hybrid, being fully remote. I just hope that when that decision's made, that there are some more stringent rules put into place, that we don't have as much back and forth. I know, and again, this year has been a challenging year, but I know that, you know, we still have kids who will stay home when they want to take a test or they want to be at home for whatever reason, that are fully remote. And I know that was something that you mentioned earlier when we decided to go back full-time, that that was going to be something that we would, you know-
We've seen a lot of improvement, yes.
On attendance. And I also know that's difficult for the nurse and attendants to do. But I just, I guess there's a concern, and again, the year is almost over, so it doesn't really matter, but I'm really thinking of going forward into next year when you have so many kids who stay home because they want to, but they'll come up for sports in the afternoon. And, you know, I just hope that there's some more planning that, I mean, if you truly do have a concern and a fear that you are fully remote and it's not as flexible, I guess. So that was just my concern that I hope we plan for in the-
Mrs. Crowley, I can state firmly that I share your concern. And we will make sure that the fluid nature that we had to implement into our classrooms does not continue in perpetuity. There are health and safety concerns, and then there's the other stuff. We will eliminate the other stuff to every extent possible.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Crowley. Any more residents? I see Mr. Weiss.
Here tonight, so twice in a night, I'm up here asking a question. Tom Weiss, this question is more, I think for Dr. Bossert, the topic of competitiveness came up, and also just recently, the U.S. News and World report for high schools rankings, excuse me, came out. My question is, it's nice to see us at 117, but I was really shocked to see Harbor Fields at 42. So in your role, or is it the board's role, who looks at that to say, what are they doing and what are we not doing, or how do we get that? And I know it's a ranking, but just from a perspective of, you know, they're right across, they're our closest neighbor. So is there anything that you're, the administration is looking at to see how we can improve in those statistics and so forth?
Thank you for asking the question. There are, you know, some strict criteria that are used for those rankings. And U.S. News and World Reports pulls data out of the stated websites and some of the other depositories that we use. And there is an area where we can define measured growth. And there are subsets of specific groups of children demographically where we can use improvement. That is one of the categories where we do not rank as high as some of our neighbors, A, because they don't have a similar level of diversity perhaps that's measured, and B, because some of our students representing diversity do not achieve as academically, as a high academic level as some of their peers. So that is something that we know will help improve our overall rankings and standing, and also something that we really prioritize. We need to figure out why some of our subgroups of students don't perform at the same level as others. It's pretty clear that there are some, there are some lines that need to be corrected, and that will be our focus moving forward.
You will? Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. All righty. Any other residence remarks? Seeing none, closing the residence remarks for this section. That brings us up to our consent agenda. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion, Ms. Ma Malito, seconded by Dr. Siddiqui. Questions and comments? Seeing one question or comment, Ms. Weiss?
I do. Hold on one second, it was such a while ago now.
He said 12, 13, 14, I think.
Okay, so I had a question on a couple of the items, just some clarity. On number 12, the approval of additional compensation for Regents Review, I don't know if anybody can hear me, for the compensation for the Regents Review, can you just give us an approximate of how many hours that's going to be? Is it going to be 20 hours, or, I know they do it after school?
If it pleases the board, I'm going to call upon Dr. Holt to provide clarity to that question.
Thank you, Dr. Bossert.
The Regents Review classes for each of the Regents that will be administered will run for one and a half hours over three sessions.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, the next question I have is the next two items, again, just for clarity. The, can you just tell me what the credit recovery program is? I don't know if I fully understand.
Yes, the New York State Education Department provides for credit recovery. It's most typically seen during the summer, but it does occur in high schools during the year. And the way that it works is it's based on number of hours. So for example, in the summer, to, if you have failed a course for the year, you need to complete 20 hours and earn a passing grade in order to earn credit. And those hours get prorated depending on if you're looking to recover credit for a single semester, I mean, for a single quarter or two quarters. So we have gone through all of our students' profile, our guidance counselors, our high school administration. They've identified students who have had one or two quarter failures, and they have built in using students' study hall periods or lunch periods if it's what the student wants to do at that time, the opportunity for credit recovery using teachers certified in that area. So there's two options. One is the program that we've set up for the next six weeks that would be during school time. And the other option for students where it doesn't fit into their schedule is an after-school program where we run two-hour sessions.
And that's the distinction between item 13 and 14?
Yeah, that's why they're two different, they have two different rates.
Thank you for that excellent explanation. The last item, and this is for Dr. Bossert, is for the approval of the Nassau Suffolk Super, where is it? Oh, here it is. Sorry, item number 20. I don't ever recall seeing that before. Is that something new to us? Maybe I've been asleep at the wheel a little bit, but-
That's actually the Nassau Suffolk School Boards Association, Mrs. Weiss. So as a component member, you're asked to support those who will be representing you.
Okay, is that new, or that's always been and I just haven't paid attention to it?
I'm not sure it's annual, but it's not new.
Okay, all right, that's it. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
All right, thank you, Ms. Weiss. We have a motion on the floor. We had a second. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor, 5-0.
May I, Mr. Toneyo?
You may, Dr. Bossert.
I would like to thank the board for the support of all of tonight's recommendations brought forward, but I would especially like to highlight two of them. Tonight, the Board of Education entered into an agreement for a three-year contract with our Power Professionals Association. I would like to thank Ann Selick, the president of the bargaining unit, and all the members in the negotiating team for what was very fruitful, respectful, and fair- in the negotiating team for what was very fruitful, respectful, and fair dialogue to reach an agreement that I feel is beneficial to both the district and the members of the unit, and to all of those members, congratulations on your successful contract. We appreciate the unanimous ratification of the agreement yesterday and the unanimous support of the board tonight. And if you're watching, that concludes that process. And in addition, the board took action tonight to approve the tenure of several outstanding members of the Elwood School community, and while none of them are here tonight, we hope they're all are able to join us at the June meeting where we will recognize them as being recently recommended, approved for tenure, and we even hope to have COVID-friendly coffee and dessert of some kind provided in celebratory fashion. But those individuals were our middle school principal, Dr. Christina Moran, our high school English teacher, Lauren Braun, our middle school, high school technology teacher, Mr. Charles Roganer, and our teacher assistants, Gina Castelli, Kathleen Carbonell, Lisa Drago, Lisa Gramatico, Jill Greenblatt, Marissa Sheehan, and Helena Weisman. For all of those who did take the time, stuck with us, and may be watching from home, congratulations, the board just unanimously supported your tenure recommendation, and we look forward to celebrating with you next month. Christina, go to bed.
Thank you, Dr. Bossert. All right, that brings us up to our third residence remarks this evening. Seeing none, may I have a motion to enter into executive session for the purpose of confidential discussions regarding an independent labor contract? Motion, Dr. Siddiqui, seconded by Mrs. Weiss. All in favor? 5-0.